Welcome to regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting. Six P M, Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-five, City Hall complex, Council chamber. Call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Mr. President, the honor.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united up, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. No call to the public. We move to recognitions. Presenter, award-winning of Mayor's Office Art Show Contest, Ms. Montiel. Go ahead.
Yeah, I see lots of kids out here. Thank you. Well, this was our first year that we held under the Mayor's Office, our art showcase contest. And it was titled, Why, we have a winner over there. Why Do You Love Nogales? And that was the prompt. And so we invited all the kids here, all the schools, to participate, third through, I believe, it was third through eighth grade students here in Nogales, Arizona. So we had a lot of students turn-ins, admit their art project. And it was just such a thrill to go over the drawings of all these students. We had a number of them. And it was nice to see how creative kids are. They really are. You are just amazing. And so I was sitting here looking at, I went through them last week and we had a couple of people look through them. And it was just hard to choose because everyone's a winner. But unfortunately, in the real world, you have to pick a few, right? And some of you that are sitting in the audience are the people that the judges chose. And I'm so, so proud of you, really, as a former teacher. I'm proud that you, first of all, that you entered this contest, that you found it important to collaborate with the city in Nogales. And also, I want to thank your teachers because they encouraged you to participate in this contest. And there are so many reasons that we all, including ourselves, that are sitting here, love Nogales. And that's what we're all here in this room, because we really love our community. And we chose the following winners. And I'd like to present, Mayor and I, on behalf of the City Council and the mayor, we'd like to present you the winners, everyone out there. And they'll also be showcased in the Nogales International and will also showcase you in our in our website, the city website. And like I said, I am so proud of you and your parents, too, and your teachers and your principals. I really want to thank them. And we're going to start off with Downtown Academy. That's a charter school here downtown. We had the most entries by this school. So I want to say thank you to the principal. And I'll be calling out your name. And the artwork will be on the website, okay? Because I'm sure a lot of your classmates at your schools will be really excited about seeing your drawings, okay? So also, we have a little gift for you, a certificate to go to Walmart. Who doesn't like Walmart, right? Seems like we live at Walmart. And it's a certificate to buy whatever you please, not the entire store, of course, but a little gift from the city of Nogales, okay? And like I said, it's the first time we hold this contest and we'll be doing it. We had such great success. We'll do it every year, as long as the mayor and the council wishes to have it. So I'm going to start off with Downtown Academy. And I'm going to call out, if you could come up as I call your name, Emma Rosas. So, so Emma, here is your certificate, Mrs. Barada. And here is your drawing. And she wrote about why she likes Nogales, of course. And it's all based on the seasons, that we have wonderful seasons here at the city of Nogales, and don't we, right? Great place to live. And here's your certificate and, of course, your little Walmart gift. And here's your drawing. Oh, you're welcome. And if you could just stand right there so you could take a picture of all the winners. Appreciate it. And your class, the following classmate there, Downtown Academy, is Sofia Cárdenas.
Thank you. So a lot of students, unfortunately, were not able to make it, but I'm the director for them.
Oh, wow, what a great job you did to encourage the kids to participate in this contest.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Oh, it's our pleasure. And here's Sofia's and her certificate. And she says her favorite part about Nogales is her school. So she drew her school, yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it so much.
Stay up here, of course. The second winner is Kimberly Fuentes from Downtown Academy. And I need for the police chief and the entire department to hear this. She says the best thing about Nogales is the traffic is always orderly and the streets are clean. Thank you so much, Kimberly. Here you go. The next winner is Leila Tanori Kano. And she loves Nogales because she says she's got a lot of friends and she also has cousins and all her family get together here in Nogales. And especially, she loves Downtown Academy because it's a place where everybody gets along. You're welcome. The next winner from this school is Leslie González. And Leslie, I loved your pencil drawing. It's all in pencil. And what she said that she loves Nogales is because it's the mountains. It's surrounded by mountains. Isn't that true? We kind of live in a valley, don't we? And I love the fact that you were very unique about your drawing. Thank you. Congratulations. We have two winners from Coronado Elementary School. And one of them is Jimena Duarte. Jimena said what she loves most about Nogales is her family. And what I thought it was really unique about this is that she drew her family and she drew them exactly, at least that's what she said, is how they dress every day. And she also added, mind you, her fish. Congratulations, Jimena. You did an awesome job. Next winner from Coronado Elementary School is Jacqueline Barrasa. And Jacqueline, I see you love sunsets. And she said that the reason she loves Nogales is those beautiful sunsets. And we all take pictures of the sunset. And what I love most about her is that she used, tell them what you used here, sweetie.
I used a pencil shaving to make a skirt.
Yeah, she used a pencil shavings to make a skirt. So I thought that was very unique. Thank you so much, Jacqueline. And our next winners are from, winner is from Sacred Heart School. And if I can have, yeah, Sacred Heart School is my, and excuse me if I don't pronounce your name, right? Because you have a very unique and beautiful name, is Meicaí Gabriel Gabriela Patriarca. And I'm going to have you say your name.
Macy Gabriel Rodan Patriarca.
Okay, I was really off. I'm sorry about that. I'm fine. Oh, thank you. And I loved your drawing and they all loved your drawing. And what you love most about Nogales is it's very pretty and it's where my school is located. And she also has, of course, Sacred Heart Church. All in pencil. And she has the different, I'm not an artist, but please correct me. She has the different scales of using the pencils. Please don't kill me out there, artists, but I think that's called. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we had a couple of winners from the following elementary school, Bracker. And we have Matías Hernández. Matía, you are brave among all these girls. And Matías, what you love about your city is you love the fact that we're a border city. And he draws Nogales, Arizona, and he draws, mind you, the public library and Robert M. Bracker. Yes, thank you. And also, he talks about how he loves a Mexican culture and food and tacos and bataquerías and all of that. So and of course, he draws the famous fence. Thank you so much. What a beautiful idea. Thank you. Our next winner from there is Gael López. Gael, and what we loved about your drawing is that not only are we divided by a fence, right? But we're really not divided. We're just one huge, huge community. But what you said is that this little town got talent. And he included all the schools in Nogales, Arizona and their logos. Yes, I thought that was very unique. So you can tell he's a future, a future coach or a president. You're sure a team player, aren't you? Yes, thank you so much, Mihil. Here you go. And your certificate is there and your card. And last, we have Kendra Barra from Bracker Elementary. What grade are you in, Kendra? Fifth grade, yes. And Kendra wrote about and drew about City Hall. She loves Nogales partly because of City Hall. And of course, we have a beautiful park, the Tea Park, and she also drew Starbucks. And a couple of other locations that she feels very safe in this community because of these places she visits. So thank you very, very much, all of you. And those are our winners of our first annual drawing contest. Again, thank you so much for participating. We really appreciate them. Give them a big round of applause.
I want to congratulate all students, you know, thank you for participating, Ms. Montiel. Thank you for organizing this great event. It shows what talent we have in Nogales. And, you know, thank you for director for doing it. And all directors from all the schools, thank you for participating. Parents, wouldn't be without you. Thank you. Have a great day.
As your teachers say, you may be seated. Thank you. Have a great rest of the evening. Oh, you dropped your card, yeah. Someone dropped their card, yeah. You don't want the attorney to pick that up. Yeah. He'll take it.
Next, I want to do a special recognition and big thank you for the services and dedication to Nogales, the city of Nogales by Ms. Leti Robertson. Ms. Leti, thirty-one years. Thirty-one years of accomplishment of working for the city. Really appreciate it, Ms. Leti. Yes. Ms. Leti, mil, mil gracias por los, todos sus servicios, los ocho años que yo tengo aquí. Siempre muy agradecido. We really, really appreciate everything you have done and did for the city. And we're going to miss you. Thank you. Next, we move to number five, presentation. Design service proposal for the administrative service building renovation formerly known as Chase Bank Building. Presenter, Fon Shakel. Close. Sturkle and Joe Victor. From McKinstry Eastern LLC.
Joe. Before Fon starts, and thank you, Fon, certainly, and Joe and Aaron. And I just met Cliff. Thank you, Cliff. Counsel, I just wanted to let you know that we're doing this presentation based on, certainly when you brought me in a few months ago, you asked me to change some things, create a new paradigm shift, as I like to say, and most of you say the same thing. It's certainly important that, one, you, those of you that are on the council budget for this five, six years ago, it's certainly important and we're moving in that direction with this. And second of all, without telling McKinstry, I did awfully screen other companies as well. There were a few of you that knew that, but I certainly did this. And we are following certainly protocol because we do follow what's the co-ops. And our attorney is actually working on that contract, but that's not tonight. But certainly, I wanted you to know, this is the direction of it. We certainly want to get going in this. And with that said, I will turn it over to the regional, the state, three-state, tri-state regional director. Thank you, Fon.
Thank you. I don't know how you follow that. You have a legacy of, what I'm pretty sure is the next city council, mayors, police chiefs, the people who are going to serve your community for many, many years, followed by someone who has clearly passionately left the legacy. It's, thank you. As a mother, as a grandmother, communities matter. And I could spend the next five slides telling you the infomercial about McKinstry. And instead of doing that, I'm just going to speak from the heart for just a second. And then I'm going to let the most important people talk that are going to tell you what we're actually going to do. I am the regional director for McKinstry, serving the Southwest. So I am an Arizona resident and have been an Arizona resident for over thirty years. I also run Utah and Nevada under my preview, along with Cliff, who is the head of our operations departments of construction and engineering for our teams. I've been with McKinstry over four years. And if you want to know where the buck stops for our team, buck stops with me. But I passionately believe in, as does McKinstry, as a corporation in servant leadership. And my job is to enable and equip the team members that will serve your city to do what we commit to do and to provide what the city needs. I left corporate America after more than thirty years and joined McKinstry because of the values that we instill and that we believe and empower all of our local offices to do. And that is first and foremost, people are first, our customers, and what we do being an impactful part of every community and investment of our time and our resources and the quality of what we do aligned with providing what you need. And then our employees. Because without them, we can't serve you. So my job, if anyone ever needs, you will have my contact information. My job is to equip and empower. I will be here frequently because we believe in also servant leadership with a hands-on approach, understanding, we must understand the communities in which we serve or we can't add that value. And I want Joe to be able to talk because the project is what's most important. So I'm going to turn the mic over to him. We do have, I do want to let you know, we serve cities across the U.S., small, big, everything in between. I'm pretty proud of the resume we've built both in Arizona and across the country. But we do that through servant and first and foremost, thinking about that. On this project, McKinstry takes a different approach towards how we deliver projects. We do an integrated delivery approach, which means we own the engineering through construction phases because ensuring that we start every project with the end in mind, which is how it's going to serve the people who use the building and the community in which that building and those workers serve has to be holistic. And it has to think in all ways of how we preserve resources, preserve energy, but provide a great experience for all those within the community. So when you see traditional construction, if anybody wants, I can speak ad nauseam about this. But you see a traditional construction that is siloed and ownership. And then at the end of the day, everybody says, whose responsibility is this? And there are fingers pointing every which way because everybody owned a small element. We own everything. We are responsible for everything, whether that's a contractor that we brought in, community partnerships that we do, we are responsible and we will take accountability. We work with the contracting mechanisms that the city uses through co-ops and through other agreements. We're on state contracting lists. Our job is to find what works for you and to find a way to make that happen for you. So I look forward to serving my team, serving you through my team. Joe, you've got the project and I trust him explicitly, implicitly.
Thank you.
Joe, I know you're an engineer.
Yes.
They show you how to use the PowerPoint presentation.
There we go. I got it.
All right.
I got it. Thank you. This is our, yes, sir. Sorry. Oh, okay. It takes a team to do a big project. And so our McKinstry team includes Aaron, who is here, Fon, myself, Cliff, Jeff Flynn, Construction Project Manager. He's been several visits here and he was here today again to, and Marisa, behind the scenes, is really the backbone of our project delivery. So that's our team. That's the people and the faces that you'll see during our engineering and construction processes. We have, we're a billion-dollar-a-year corporation, twenty-six locations, three thousand employees. But what's most important, like Fon said, is what we do for you and how we listen to our customers and we deliver quality projects. This is a listing of many of the municipalities that we work with. And we've got a great, beautiful green one right up there by the E experience. We do a lot of projects for a lot of different customers and we're glad that you have selected us. We talked a little bit about traditional construction and where to find us. So I'm the point person for the engineering. And then we will turn it over to Jeff during construction. But this is one of the things that differentiates us, the traditional construction versus our approach. In addition, it does take a team. So architect Jason Chamberlain came down today. He's with DPA Architecture. And then we've got civil engineering, structural engineering, MEP, fire protection and sprinklers, fire detection and alarm. And we're going to leverage as much as we can, local suppliers and contractors. It's very, very important to spend the money here in town. So our design development fee proposal was two hundred and five thousand. That is twelve percent of the project anticipated budget. The budget was one point seven million. We're going to do our best to trim that and manage that to only what you need. The following slides then will show the scope of the work. So how many of you have been over to the building and seen the lower level? This is a picture of how it looks now. And the project is really about relocating several departments over to the new building. So this will be called the Business Administrative Services Building. So we're locating several departments over there, including H R and I T and the business administration. So we're going to be remodeling the building with lighting, HVAC, restrooms, really a completely different look. New office space, we're going to reuse the drive-through window so that customers will be able to drive through and drop off their payments rather than parking and getting out. So we thought that was a really neat feature. So you guys did a great job on getting that building. We're also going to be relocating the kiosk from Public Works, which isn't utilized much. So that now you'll have a kiosk at this building. Plenty of new parking and new lights outside as well. And then we'll be reconditioning the parking lot, adding additional lighting outside and replacing some doors. This is the floor plan that's intended to serve the functions that are there. There'll be three pay stations, just like you have now, with the drive-through in the bottom right. And then these are the office spaces. There will be access control, a nice public library, sorry, lobby area for serving the public. And then all of the other functions that are located there. We do have to expand the restrooms a little bit. The meter readers will be located in here. And the safe will stay as is, which is really cool feature. And so this is a view of the safe and the main conference room, the way it exists now. Again, new ceilings, new walls, new floors, et cetera. On the second floor, this is a view from the one corner out. This is going to look completely different as well. New flooring, new office spaces, new lighting, thermostats, relocation of the human resources team up in that corner. There'll be a very large conference room in the right-hand side and the I T department. So the people, the six people that are in the I T team will be relocating over here, but the hardware will stay here at this facility. There'll also be an emergency generator so that power is continuous there. And then on the second floor, this is the rough layout. So as the public would enter through the doorway on the right side, there'll be a very large training and conference room on the right side, along with file storage. The public would enter and be able to be greeted by an administrative and reception desk. A H R department is in the top right. And then on the left is the I T, where the mechanical, electrical room are, a nice break room that exists. So almost everything from the office to the left is existing. The walls are going to stay except for the restrooms. We're determining based upon occupancy how many toilets and urinals and sinks and stuff that we need to support the new functions. And this is a view facing the I T room and area as it exists now. And our overall schedule is intended to be starting with design right away, getting the design services completed so we can get to plan review and get permits. We're going to be doing some materials testing, sewer line camera, making sure that the sewer line is functional. Building hasn't been used in several years, so we want to make sure. And then we will be briefing you as the progress occurs. And we intend to be done with the construction by December twenty-third or sooner. And that's all we had for a brief introduction. Hi. Nice, sir. Uh, okay. I think we have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman G.
Yes. Really like, for some reason, it's not working here. Oh, thank you.
I like it very much. The building was bought in my administration when I was mayor. And we got it, we got it for, well, we got, we got the whole building. We got the whole building plus three and a half acres. building plus three and a half acres. We wanted to bring in more property to the complex, city complex, and we got it for a little over half a million.
Wow.
So that was, that was a real ganga. We knew that we weren't going to get in right away as far as the building, but just the property that we accessed and everything to the complex, we've been able to do more with the park and other areas. We have parking now that we didn't have for the PD, the fire department. So it's made it a lot easier on the exterior part of the building. But now that I see it, and we are keeping the safe, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
That's beautiful because, you know, we, I mean, it's a real well-built safe, so.
It is.
And the only thing that I was going to ask, I don't know if I missed it or didn't see it, are we going to have some kind of elevator going up to the second floor?
There is an existing elevator now.
Okay, good.
And the architect was actually excited. He says, this is beautiful architecturally. I don't know if you've ever stand there and looked down that hallway with the columns and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
He stood back and was waiting for me to get out of the way so we could take a picture. But yeah, we're excited to be part of the project.
Well, I'm so happy that our president, administration, the mayor and city manager have brought you, have brought your team to do a great work, which I think it's going to be a blessing for the whole community, not just the city administration. But thank you so much for
Thank you, sir.
taking the challenge.
You betcha. Glad to. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Moncrief.
I have a couple of questions. So yeah, I'm really excited too because, you know, it's every time I pass through it, which is almost every day, I just think to myself, okay, I know they made an investment under Mr. Donald's administration. We want to make sure that's on record. And but, you know, it saddens me because it's like, you know, we got to be proactive. And I've been asking this question for years now. So I'm really excited about that. You know, just the plans look great. You know, I'm glad that you, you know, just so the public can know, the allocation has been there, sitting there already. It's not like we're going to use taxpayers' money to do a new project. It's been sitting there. So it's been allocated. We just haven't, you know, had a city manager. Thank you, Mr. Kramer, for making it happen. Because I think people are going to be so, I don't think they're going to be elated about it because they're seeing that something was finally done. And the only thing I ask you is, is that could it be painted the same color? I'm, you know, I'm like into like coordinating. So it could just look flawless, like this building belongs to that building and that building belongs to the city, to this original building. And my third question is, who designed that building? Was it Mr. Gonzalez, which is an architect, I think Mr. Lariva's neighbor there, our neighbor, Mr. Riva? It looks like a Gonzalez building, which is the same architect that built the public library. Does anybody know who built that, that building?
I was not able to find the original construction plans. Again, the architect was very excited to see it and work on it. We drove by the library.
Uh-huh.
He said, I want to work on that one, too.
I bet. Yeah, yeah.
Windows and lights and stuff.
Yeah.
The color, we did not, we did not anticipate painting the outside because the paint on the outside is actually in pretty good shape.
Oh.
But if the city would like us to, we can certainly put that.
Yeah.
Go to the mic.
Yeah.
We can certainly include that in the budget.
Okay. Well, I'll let the manager take care of that. But, but I think it would, it looked nice. But that's just a personal, you know, observation, you know, that so it could just look like one entire city, city of Nogales buildings. Yeah. And I think that's just the questions I had. If you could just, I don't know, maybe, maybe Mr. Lariva knows. I know that Benny was your neighbor. She still misses, still lives next door. I'll try to find out, too, because I think it's important to recognize if he was the architect because he, you know, he's done great buildings here in Nogales, a couple homes. And I'm just curious. So they'll be our homework. I'll give Mr. Kramer homework to find out who built that building. Maybe we should.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. And that's about it. Good. Thank you.
Anybody else? I want to thank you, Mr. Kramer, for this opportunity for these people to really come back and finally do something in that building. I think we've been waiting for it for a long time. And Mr. Doe, was there numbers, dollar amounts back then that we could spend? Are we within those parameters? And are you aware of that, Mr. Kramer? That there was, there was, I recall there was a limitation on spending on that building?
No, that, that doesn't apply to that. I know what you're referring to. And certainly we've checked on that and we're, we're good with it.
Okay.
Referring to FEMA, correct?
Yes, we had a conversation with your insurance agent regarding the amount of investment giving the proximity of the floodplains, too. So.
So yeah, we've already, I looked into that and I shared that information with the team.
Yep.
Okay. I just want to get it clear right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And that's, you know, looks like a great project and go at it.
I think what they're going to, as they said, I think each and every one of them will get familiar with all of them because they'll be down here, more of their team members as well. I know that Herman is certainly putting up a plaque for Joe already because that's his favorite place to eat, shrimp tacos. So Herman is very happy about him. So but nevertheless, I mean, it's good that we're doing this. It's certainly important. And I know we had a budget and I gave them the budget. They've stuck to the budget. Granted, I've kept some as a conservative as I am. I held off to some because I didn't, there's always intangibles. We certainly want to ensure that there's no abatement, that we didn't bring that up, but we want to make sure that if there happens to be, we'll still be in budget with that because it is an older building designed by, I don't know, I'll let you know. But nevertheless, it's certainly important that you'll get to know this team again. As I said, they'll become familiar because also since they're here, I was a part of my manager report, but I'll just add that in. We are looking at, as I stated in the budget meeting about the old fire hall. And I know they've gone over there. They certainly went to the museum today as well and saw that. But it's certainly important because it is a historical landmark, historical in 1980, when they got deemed that. So they, I know we are looking to hopefully expand upon that, whatever possibilities. I've certainly met with the finance team. Aaron was heading the finance team. We've chatted with them. I've chatted with in teams because they're going, we're going to look to whatever possible grants we can possibly get with that. And certainly other companies may even help just say, hey, you know, because it is such a unique building. It saw the little Battle of Nogales. It saw the Buffalo Soldiers, has seen everything from there. So I think that's an important aspect of it. And as the city of Nogales, we are taking the lead of revitalization downtown. Well, that's going to be there because if we do get that starting upstairs, there will be a place to have some beverages for people that want to visit upstairs. And I think that's important, too, for the Legion Club and the old fire hall. So there's other places that we're looking across and we're certainly looking at. I'm not going to, I've told you on my budget presentations before, but I want to just let you know they are part of this. And we certainly, we're staying in the letter of the law because Joe is keeping us on line with the contracts and everything to that effect. But we are moving forward with what you guys asked me to do. And I think it's important that we do this. And the taxpayers and the residents of Nogales deserve, and they deserve a lot more. And thank you as a council for approving this, for letting me do this. And I'm certainly, I'm glad that we have McKinstry on board because actually they, I got recommendations from other places, too. And Pete McCowne certainly gave a good recommendation as well. So with that said, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. And thank you, McKinstry.
Thank you. Thank you. Nick?
Yes, I told them they could go after the president.
Okay.
Because I got to drive back up to Phoenix and I think, Joe, you got to get to.
King of the.
You have to be in King.
Thank you. Have a safe drive back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update on restrooms in Karen Park. Mr. Tapia.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. After the discussion of the big building, I'll give you an update of a little bathroom. Yeah, basically, this is like, just to show you the process that we took from the initial conversations that we had last year and then the funds allocated. Remember the Alpha funds that we used? And then the, how the idea was to use internal city staff to work on this, not getting consultants for something like this in downtown. And then, as you remember, we also went through the Santa Cruz County flood control use permit. That took a while, but I mean, eventually we got the use permit. And because it isn't a flood plain and we have a discussion that we have to elevate the bathrooms or not, you know, it was not, but it was a requirement that we have to go through that process as well, like all other businesses do. So during the, once we got the use permit for the county, we went through the city building permit, like everyone else, all businesses. Ourself, we also went through the building permit process. And then we requested bids with local contractors. That was the direction to look at a local contractors. But unfortunately, in the beginning, we were unable to find someone that able to do the whole bathroom remodel, only one contractor. We got to select like three different subcontractors and ourselves monitoring the work. So the work started after the 2024 holidays, I mean, January, February. And then now we have the, the final building inspection. We went this morning and we found some minor things that had to be corrected, but basically it's complete. Now the next discussion is going to be the continuous maintenance, who's going to be doing it and how to provide the funding to make it, really carefully not to let it go like on the last time. So hopefully, we can discuss that with the city manager. So the key points that I wanted to emphasize is a labor force, like I mentioned earlier. We have to break the project in small pieces. And then we did internally, we did the overall coordination. And then the, as you recall, we wanted to also get all the parts for the remodel, local vendors. So the Home Depot provided most of the parts, but unfortunately, in some cases, we didn't have, typically, they only have a limited stack. At the world, they told me something and during this process, the name Home Depot, they don't carry many commercial parts. So we had to be ordering those parts online. In some cases, we had to go to Tucson to find those parts. So this is the, just quickly, the, how the old bathroom was, those conditions. We have the bathrooms, the men bathrooms on the north side of the building and the women's bathroom also on the, on the north side of the building. So we, we had to go through all, replacing all the water lines, the sewer lines and cut the concrete and put new, brand new sewer, sewer line connections to the, to the main sewer on the, on Marley Avenue. Even during this process, we went shopping and we found very special in Home Depot. This, the, the sinks was going to cost us like a $6,000. And basically, we spent only $350 for the sinks. Really nice looking, but we got a very good special. So this is the final product. As you can see, I don't know, I think a couple of you were able to see it already, but it's already done. During the final inspection, like I mentioned yesterday, we, I mean, this morning, we're doing some kind of minor details, painting on the main door and then do a final finish on the floor. But basically, it's already done. But we need to discuss the grand opening and then the continued maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Doe.
There you go. Thank you. You said, is that the sinks, is that for both bathrooms? You said $6,000?
Yeah, it was going to be $6,000, but we found a special. So we got these things.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. So right now, how much is the total that you've run up to?
I need to make a summary, but I mean, it was like allocated was close to $65,000 in that, in that range. But we had to spend some, buying some parts in Tucson. We had to do some extra expenses after that.
Is that mostly because you had to kind of get different people to work in the bathroom and?
The labor was going to take hard, local.
Nobody, nobody, you said nobody wanted to take the Honda home?
Because it's small. When I call bigger companies, they just say it's too small for us. So, so I did find local, local contractors to do the.
So when's the grand opening going to be for you?
It's up to you.
I'm seeing here that today was a final inspection, right?
Yeah.
And you found, is there going to be a postponement or?
Well, we have to make a couple of things that we found, so we need to.
Okay, I just want to take that.
We can do it Friday or Saturday or Monday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Tapia, are the porta potties gone? Are they, have they been removed?
No.
Huh?
Till they open.
I just want to make a comment. Thank you. I was there Saturday and saw the final thing on this thing, on this, the restrooms are unbelievable. They're great. So you better go. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Tapia, besides the restrooms, how, can you give us an update on the arch?
We have this, maybe, maybe Mr. Kramer can mention that.
Yeah, that would be for a different, I told him just to stick with this one because we've, with the other presentation, we can do that. You can do it even on next council meeting?
Yeah, we can.
Because I just wanted to make sure we, because this was the topic. I didn't want to stray from the topic and talk about the arch again. So that would be another, we can do that again for the next presentation.
Yes, sure.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Kramer, can I make a motion to do the opening ceremony for this Friday?
No? Okay.
Well, put, put as a request at the end. Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, man.
We need to get new ones, too. Yeah, they don't work that well, but that's okay. I would love a voice. Thank you, Mr. Tapia, for addressing this and taking care of it and finding great deals. Yeah. So with all of that in mind, one of the things is, which is something that you can't control nor the city can control is vandal, you know, when they get vandalized. And, and that's what happens, unfortunately. Have you maybe suggested some cameras? Not inside the bathroom, I know that. I know that, Mr. Estes. But, you know, outside cameras and that could be something you could add to the list when you sit down with the city manager. Because, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of money invested by the city residents and, and a lot of work. I was there Saturday. They look great. They're, they, they, they just, I think it's, it's what the people have been asking for, you know, nicely done. And I mean, they're industrial material and they're going to last. But unfortunately, you know, things aren't taken care of, right? When they don't pay for them, then they don't take care of them as well. So, so maybe some cameras in the future would be great. Karen Park, I know Mrs. Melendez has asked for that. But other than that, thank you for taking care of it. And we hope to have the opening ribbon cutting soon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Just a lot for, yes, I know it took a long time, but we're planting the seed for downtown redevelopment. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia. Great job, huh?
One question, Mr. Tapia. From the audience, somebody kind of was asking ADA. You ensured that all the restrooms are ADA compliant, correct?
That's correct. And also we added the ADA ramp. It's complete already with the the handrail. It's going to be painted the next couple of days, too.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that because that question would come up. So thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia.
Thank you. Next, next we move, we're going to table finance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to table finance due to a health issue?
You don't need a motion to table it just because it's a report, so it's not in action either.
Oh, no, I'm. Oh, no, I'm I moved ahead, sorry.
Yeah, that's Uh just, Mr. Mayor, just so we're all in on board with this too is yeah, there was just a concern that with the employee, but that's fine. Um we'll table this for our study session for the next Wednesday, for our discussion on budget.
Thank you. Next, we move to the discussion, number seven, discussion action item. Discussion direction and possible action on the request from the International Boundaries and Water Commission, IBWC, for payment of delinquent invoices related to a to the Nogales International Wastewater Treatment Plant. Mr. Kramer?
Yes, I think you have a a request from council member?
Yes, I, Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I move that the mayor and council entered into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431-0383 for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding the requests from the International Boundary and Water Commission for payment of delinquent invoices related to the Nogales International Wastewater Treatment Plant. For for executive session.
She's asking move move to executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, move to executive session.
Executive session. Going to an action item number seven. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, on the post. Motion passes. Next we go to discussion, number two, discussion direction possible action on a request submitted by Mr. Michael Karam seeking a waiver for two specific requirements outlined in the 2024 Nogales Development Standards. Mr. Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Karam, if you could go up to the podium and explain your request to council, please.
Introduce myself. My name is Michael Karam. I've been in Nogales since 1959. I've developed all of the subdivision in Meadow Hills, every one of them, all 20 of them. And we're getting ready to do another subdivision of 20 lots. And with our engineers are going through the plat to develop the plat to bring that to you all to approve, we found some discrepancies that in your new ordinances that require either a change or leave them like they are depending on what you want to do. The first thing that we found is a problem is in the code it calls for a vertical curb. A vertical curb means that the concrete comes up, pavement is here, then the concrete comes up, and then it goes up seven inches and then goes into the sidewalk. Well, how do you get from the street to the lot without driving up over the curb? First thing is going to happen is when the owner of the lot decides to build a house on it, what's going to happen is when the cement truck drives over the curb, it's going to break, and then the city is going to be required to put it back because it's a city street. Or you can charge the home lot owner for redoing it, but now it's just an extra cost to him that it doesn't need to be. The vertical curbs in a subdivision, residential subdivision, I don't know of one in the whole state of Arizona that has been a vertical curb in the last 40 years. They're all roll curbs so that you can drive over them at any place in the front of the lot that you, to get to wherever the house is going to be. Because the other part of the problem is that most of the time when you're doing a subdivision, it's an HOA, which means that the homeowners association, and you can't sell a homeowners association in this community. No one will buy it. No one wants to be told what color they can paint their house, how long they can keep their garage door open, or whether they have to put blinds in the windows. I mean, that doesn't happen here. So that's one of the things that we're asking, that you allow us to do a roll curb instead of a vertical curb. The second thing we're asking for is the same problem occurs when you put the sidewalk in. We put the sidewalk in, guy drives over it with his cement truck and his lumber truck and all the appliances, and it's going to break the sidewalk up. So what we would like to do is in our covenants and restrictions on the lot, we would like to say that in view of not having a sidewalk, that the owner of the house has to landscape all the way down to the edge of the concrete curb, which eliminates the sidewalk but makes it a better looking property than the sidewalk. And that's what we're asking for. We have to, we can't finish the plat of the lots to bring it to you until we know whether or not that is going to be acceptable or not, the curb change and the sidewalk change. We're more than willing to do either one, or we're willing to both of them. But we think that the city would be unwise to put the vertical curb in in the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we, I invited a few council members at times. We certainly looked at the plans. I think that Councilwoman Palada, we drove in that area, we saw it. I think it's right over behind the old number two green, the par five that ran through there when it was a nine-hole course. It's right off to that area, right over by the holding pond, that the holding pond, by the way, is for bird watching. I realize I found that out too. But anyway, it's in that area. My recommendation, I mean, I, we have rolling curbs in Meadow Hills throughout, like you said, other areas rolling curbs. I, as a city manager, didn't have a problem with that. I sidewalks, while that's one thing that I let council, I, either or, I don't see a problem with. After Mr. Karam explained to two or three of us council, two council members and myself, that the lots probably are going to be large, they're 1.5, 2, 3, some of them are 4.5. So the areas where it's maybe not going to be your residential for children, starter homes, that kind of thing, it's probably going to be upper level homes running into starting at 400,000 to 500,000. So those homes usually don't want sidewalks and having people around. But again, I'll leave that up to council. But my suggestion is I'm fine with rolling curbs and sidewalks is neither here nor there for me.
Thank you. I go to Mr. Tapia, we just did the ordinance, all that was included, what was it, back in September? You know, give me your opinion, you know. I've got nothing against not doing the vertical because I don't recall seeing it in residential. My question more is on the, even putting the rolling curb, you talked about eliminating the sidewalk, Mr. Kramer?
Eliminating the sidewalk and using landscape to take the place of the sidewalk.
That's, you know, you go, you know, right now, a lot of residencials are asking for sidewalks, you know. I'm not sure what your take is, Mr. Tapia.
Yeah, the zoning ordinance and the development standard code was adopted by city council on November 6, and it became effective on December 6, 2024. There you have the development standards as required for the subdivision plots. And as Mr. Karam was mentioning, the vertical curve typically in subdivisions, you actually, as part of the subdivision, you create also the driveways to get into the lots, not build these sidewalks or the vertical curves continuously. But every single lot will have an entrance designed for the specific lot. But the roller curves, they're also typical in other places, that's another region. But right now, we don't have an application, the city application, to make those changes, a variance, for example. While we had an application and see the development, the design, we have a pre-application with Mr. Karam and the engineer, but we don't have an official application to say we have to vary, we don't need sidewalks or we don't need vertical curves. As part of the application process, then the process actually is, it needs to go according to the ordinance, go to the planning commission to request a change to the standards that we have on the code. Right now, the process is in place in the ordinance. You have to go to planning commission first and then present it. Instead, we do our recommendation from city staff and also from the applicant that we don't need a vertical curve, we don't need the sidewalks, that would be part of the solution.
So the process is going, filling out an application, going through the application, and then going through the?
Yes, the planning commission, they will present that planning commission, then it will be decided. It can be appealed to city council. If something is decided on planning commission, then it's appealed to the city council. Right now, we don't have an application.
Mr. Tapia, if Mr. Karam goes ahead and does the applications, is it a reasonable time for him to get a response? I don't want it to drag on for months and months.
No, it's part of the application process, we can review, like we already doing it with engineer.
This is not something that, this needs to be a change in the ordinance. There are the old forms that contain the.
So that's exactly what I was going to say, why are we here then? If we, it's, we are the only ones, Mr. If we, which, it's, it's, we are the only ones, Mr. Estes, right, that we could change an ordinance and, or, you know, make one and change one. So that's why we're here today, to approve this request from Mr. Karam.
Right, I mean, normally, the process is, is that the, the application gets submitted and the request gets made in a formal manner with the application, and then it goes through the planning and zoning, so they can ask those questions and they can ferret out those issues, and then that comes to council for a recommendation. But ultimately, it is a council decision as to whether or not to waive these two requirements with regard to the rolling curb and then the other being the sidewalk.
Yes.
So, so my question is now, Mr. Tapia, when we approve these new ordinance changes, I thought you were bringing us up to the modern generation, and it seems like roll curbs have been around for over forty years, and those vertical curbs are really outdated. You don't see them in cities that are building, yet we, we put them in our, in our ordinance or, or rules, and, and yet now they're becoming a problem. It's only been a few months that we approved them. So how do we change that, that particular ordinance and bring it, Nogales back, you know, to the forefront of modern building, where we don't discourage developers and other people from building here in Nogales, because we're trying to make it easier for developers to build, not harder?
And I, I can probably help answer that one, Mr. Doyle, is, the fact is that there, there are vertical curbs. I was just showing Mr. Kramer my subdivision, and it's less than five years old, and it has vertical curbs. And there's certain reasons why you would want vertical curbs, because in our subdivision, we have a green space between the sidewalk and the roadway, and so you have a vertical curb to be able to maintain that landscaping and things, so...
How big are those lots you're talking about?
Ten thousand square foot lots. They're just regular residential lots.
Yeah, but we're talking about acres to...
Right, but...
We're talking about close to... Anyway, big acres.
Right, but when you do your design guidelines, you're not just doing design guidelines for big acres. You're trying to do design guidelines for everything. So you're trying to find something that works for everything, and when you approve new design guidelines, you're gonna have situations like this, where you're going to find that those guidelines are just that, they're guidelines. They don't fit every specific application, so that's why you have the opportunity to come in and to, to ask for certain waivers and things like that. But you want to have something that's there that's uniform, that people can see that, okay, this is why. And there are reasons why that you would want vertical curbs over rolling curbs, because, you know, a vertical curb establishes where you have your driveway, and then you, you don't have the ability, because I've seen some subdivisions that have rolling curbs, people drive right into their, their yard and park in their yard because they have a rolling curb and it's easy access. So now they're parking on rocks and things like that. So vertical curbs help prevent that. So there's a plethora of different design reasons and construction reasons why you would want one or the other, like that, you know? So it just depends on the project itself. If this project warrants and, and would look better with a, a rolling curb, and then, you know, that's, that's for the developer to say, this is why I want this relief from this design guideline.
Right.
You know, the issue, from a legal perspective, the issue with getting rid of, completely getting rid of sidewalks, the concern I have there is it pushes all foot traffic into the roadway. And now you have all pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, children, whatever it is, regardless of who, you, you can't control who buys and doesn't buy these houses. All of that traffic is now in the roadway, and that's the whole purpose for having the sidewalks, is to take that pedestrian traffic out of the roadway. There's other ways you can address it. You can have a, I've seen plenty of residential subdivisions that have sidewalks on one side of the street and not on both. Do you need them on both? Just depends on how the, on how that, that, that area is developed out. You also have ADA concerns with, you know, if you've got somebody who moves in there who has a wheelchair, you know? Are you pushing that wheelchair right into the traffic lane because you don't have and didn't require a sidewalk? So those are the things for the council to, to consider.
So this is a very particular subdivision. It doesn't apply to, to the general, where the general community lives doesn't apply to that area.
It's a public street.
It's a public street, but the traffic you're talking about is not going to exist over there. You need to go check it out and see...
No, I'm, you're always gonna have traffic. If you have twenty, twenty houses there, you're probably gonna have forty cars, because most houses have two cars. So you're gonna have forty vehicles who can be driving in and out, and if you have somebody who's in a wheelchair, they are going to be required to be in the street, regardless of whether it's just one person or, but that, that is, I'm just explaining why, why we have those guidelines and why those things are in place. It's a council decision as to whether or not you want to require it in this situation or not.
Mr. Bunez?
Mr. Tapia, I really feel very kind of uncomfortable just taking away the, the sidewalks for many reasons that Mayor and Council has stated. A lot of people in, in, in Meadow Hills, they, they like jogging, they like walking, so I can't see people kind of walking on other people's property, actually, because it's landscape all the way to the street. So, you know, the whole sidewalk, it's, it's something that we need to think about further, because I, I don't, I just, around five o'clock, six o'clock in summer, you see a bunch of people walking. I, I don't want to walk in on the, on the, on the road. Or, or, or children, or, you know, you just never know, or people riding bicycles. It's just, I think it's more of a hazard, really, not to have a sidewalk.
Mr. Bunez?
I'm just a little confused, because where I live, someone else lives in my same neighborhood over there, we don't have sidewalks. There, Vista El Cielo doesn't have sidewalks.
I've done twenty subdivisions.
So, so, for...
There are no sidewalks.
Yeah, so I, I'm just trying to, to understand this, and I understand the idea, my mom lives behind the park here, you know, Villa Coronado has sidewalks. But there are residential areas like Vista El Cielo, we don't have sidewalks, we just don't. I mean, we just walk in, you know, we walk and we, we drive, and, and so I'm trying to understand the code thing, you know? I understand what Mr. Estes is saying, that sidewalks are important, it's on the code, and we have codes for it, safety issues and stuff, but there's, I'm trying to think about these homes that are going to be built, because some, some of these homes where, at least where I referenced right now, we don't have sidewalks. So, you know, I'm just trying to understand where we go from here, because obviously it's on the agenda to, to waive it, or if Mr. Karam would have been told, then he would have filled out an application, it would have gone through that process and then come here. So we're back, we're here right now discussing it. So legally, do we have a, can we waive it for that name, for that project, for that project, because it calls for not having sidewalks, because where we live, like I said, doesn't have sidewalks? So I'm a little confused.
It's a, it's a council decision. If the council wants to waive the sidewalk requirement, but again, these are design guidelines for the city as a whole, and you don't just do design guidelines for, well, we may think that we have a small subdivision here, this is what it's gonna need. So that's why this is the process for the, the developer to come in and to ask for these guidelines to be waived, if that is what the, the situation calls for. And if that's what the council wants to do, then the council's more than welcome to do that. But that's why, I was just explaining why the design guidelines call for these certain design aspects for a number of different reasons. They, they don't necessarily apply to every subdivision, is what I'm saying. So, so council needs to look at this as, as a one-off request because of what is being proposed for the development of, of this residential area.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
If, this is like a special request from Mr. Karam, and is, is it easier or more feasible to make the waiver for this project or change the whole code? Because in, maybe in the future, other, other developers will wanna follow the same, the same route, and if we change the code, well, then they won't have to come in for requesting a waiver. So what would be your recommendation for that?
My recommendation is that you address it on a case-by-case basis. You have your standards that you've adopted, and there's a reason for those standards. So, but if those standards, if there's a reason why the developer can make an argument why those development standards shouldn't apply in this circumstance, then you look at making the waiver. But you want to make sure that you have those standards applicable across the board, because, you know, the vast majority of residential subdivisions are going to need or, or require sidewalks, or, you know? So there, you know, this may be a, an exception because of how large the lots are and how spread out things are and things like that. But if you look at a, you know, what happens if you have a developer who comes in next month and wants to build out a 300-home development, and then you just got rid of your sidewalk requirements and you want to require him, and he's gonna say, no, because you don't require it. So you require, you require it, and then if the situation warrants, you can waive it for that specific instance. And it's not, you're not setting a precedent, because you're saying that we are looking at these issues on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, and I, and I agree with that, and I don't know if there should be like, like some wording on, on the, on the, on the code that says unless a developer is willing, is requesting to waive that, that code.
Well, the developers know if... Sorry, the developers know if, if there's something in the code, in the design standards that, that they, that they want to change, they know that there's, there's a process in the code for making those change requests.
Right, that's, that's, that's the answer.
Mr. Bunez?
Mr. Estes, this, what do you call it, Planning Commission? Is that, is that their correct name? Is this like an advisory ward or...
The Planning and Zoning Commission is typically an advisory commission. I'd have to look at your specific code. Some, some municipalities vest them in decision-making authority unless, on some minor things, unless, you know, but those could always be appealed to the, the, the city council. The city council's the ultimate decision-making body, because you are the ones that establish the, the criteria, you're the ones that appoint the Planning and Zoning Commission. So normally, yes, the process would be for it to go to, you know, planning and zoning, for them to ask questions, to, for them to look at it, to make recommendations, but I don't, at this point, you know, it's before council, I don't think it, it needs to be kicked back just for that, because it's gonna come back and ultimately, you're gonna have these same conversation a month now. So my recommendation is not, not to delay it, but that we understand, you know, that there's a process in the future, let's make sure that the, the applications are in and that the process is followed for requesting these types of, of waivers.
Mr. Doh.
Yes, Mayor, I, I think we've discussed it quite a bit. I'd like to make a motion to waive the requirements on, that, that, that are handling the project, in other words.
Well, I'll say what?
So I, I make a motion to, to vote for the, for, to approve the...
I second.
I, I need a clarification.
It's clear, he's, the motion is to waive the requirement for the vertical curb and allow for rolling curbs and waive the requirement for any sidewalk.
That's correct.
No sidewalk?
Do I have a second or...
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Aye. One against sidewalks. Motion passes.
Was that a nay or not?
Nay.
Okay, so six, one.
Done.
Done.
All good?
Yes.
We're gonna have rolling curbs and we're gonna eliminate the sidewalk.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item, three discussion, direction and possible action, in-kind support.
Question that the honor room, this is, a while ago, and that was who, which is designed, the library?
Yeah.
Was Benny Gonzalez.
Was Benny, yeah.
How about the bank, you know?
Yeah, the bank was designed by Valley National Bank. It was designed in Phoenix and it was built down here.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Karam.
Thank you.
Which one, son? What?
There's an office in Meadow Hills, right?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back to, thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Karam, I appreciate it.
Any other history you'd like to tell? I've been here long enough.
Thank you, Mr. Karam.
Thank you, Mr. Karam.
Three, discussion, direction and possible action, in-kind support submitted by American Legion Post, number 23 of Nogales, Arizona, for the Memorial Day Ceremony to be held at the Nogales Cemetery on May 26, 2025.
Yes, Mayor, I, I place this, because on a regular basis or yearly basis, the city helps veterans organizations. Am I paid to speak here or am I out of, out of, out of turn?
Well, we're such, the mayor was just asking if there was a potential conflict with...
That's what I was gonna ask.
So I...
I placed it, and, and I'm the commander right now of the American Legion, so I want to know...
So the American Legion's...
Is there's a conflict that I discuss or vote on this?
The American Legion's a nonprofit, correct?
Yes, it is.
And you are non, non-paid?
Right, that's correct.
So yes, technically, under the statute, though, that is considered a remote interest, and it's not a disqualifying conflict.
Okay.
Because you, you don't receive any financial benefit from being a member of that club, so...
No, in fact, we have to pay out of our pocket to belong.
It's three of us that I'm under. Wow.
Thank you so much.
Just wanted to clarify, Mr. Doh.
Okay, it's okay, I can, okay, so...
No conflict.
No conflict.
Okay, so I just, and the reason, I guess, we want to make sure that we bring, bring it to your attention, that it's that time of the year, that, again, the city has, in the past, always helped for Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and Memorial Day is just around the corner. So we're asking for, for some help with the in-kind, and we do have Mr. Frank Lopez, that, that's been a longtime member of both the VFW and American Legion, and worked for the city, that always took care of, of, of the city equipment. In other words, once it's, it's installed and everything, and it's gonna be the same equipment that's gonna be used at the cemetery for the memorial service, and then afterwards at Fletcher Park for, we're gonna have food and refreshments.
Your time's over.
Enjoy, so they can enjoy the, the rest of the Memorial Day festivities, and, and that's, and so I placed it on the agenda so that it can be approved by the council.
Thank you, and we're looking at in-kind of $576, that's what the, so what, what, did you make the motion?
I made...
Yeah, I know, would you like it?
Oh, yeah, I made the motion to pass this for the Memorial Day.
Second by Mr. Bunez, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes. Number four, discussion, direction and possible action by Mayor and Council to adopt a new Nogales rights policy manual. Mr. Vera, Mr. Kramer?
I'll, I'll speak for us, certainly. This is, the policy was there, we've just adopted it, and with new additions to make it current, as we're trying to do with all of our policies, certainly, we've adopted it to add the new vehicle, I think it was three, and we've just tweaked it to make sure it's current and up to date to the standards. The only thing is that Juan will have to take my name off that front page, but nevertheless, other than that, I will say that it's, it's good to go.
I make a motion to pass, second. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Post, motion passes. Discussion, direction and possible action by Mayor and Council to adopt a city of Nogales Internet and IT Acceptable Use Policy. Mr. Kramer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is also updating our IT use policy for all staff, so we're in, in place of getting everyone as employees signing, and all directors will have all employees sign this, we'll get copies back to HR as well. So we want to make sure this is in place, and again, this has been updated and certainly using the State of Arizona protocol and the City of Phoenix protocol. city of Phoenix protocol to keep everything up to date as far as internet use among employees. And council.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to pass this item.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes. Number eight, orders, consideration, possible action of order 2025-05-014, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to award a city contract to Inova Engineering, Inc., for the Camino del Cielo, Camino del Sol Water, Sewer and Street Improvements, Phase Two Project, CB, CDBG number 123-24 and WIW-02206 for an amount not to exceed 1.740,070 dollars.
Second.
You got it. Can you give me a little explanation on this, please?
Okay, yeah. We bided out this project. We received, at the pre-bid meeting, we had five contractors interested. We went to the field, they asked questions about it. But at the end, at the time of the bid process, only one bidder, which is Inova. And that's what you have in front of you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Fernandez, go ahead.
Is, is Nova going to be available here so that we can ask questions or not?
You mean now available?
Well, as soon as.
Yeah, at, at the time of the project?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, I've never seen them here so that we can ask questions. And, you know, it's funny, they are the only ones that got really the.
Good, good concern. I will let know, Inova, if they, in the future, they have another contract to be, please send a representative and be present.
It'll be a good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Bonilla.
Mr. Gray, just to clarify on your answer on what Councilwoman Merendis just asked you. Maybe it was misunderstood on your behalf as I require them to be here for this project. I, I need them to do a presentation and to, and look us in the eyes. Because the history with this company, Mr. Guerra, it's not good. And I'm really concerned working with this company because in the past, they either come in late or the, the product is not up to standard. So I need for them to, for this project, I need them to come in and make a presentation on how they're going to, it's not if they want to, it's actually more of a, they have to be here. Okay. Because it's, it's not that we don't trust them, but it's been that in the past, if, I think I've been the most vocal council, council member that I have been very displeased with this company. So I understand why they always get the bids. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I, they're a huge company, but, and so they always tend to have the lowest bid. But with that said, you know, I, I require for them to, to make that presentation on how they're going about doing this project. Because it's, it's, it's one of those, when it comes to those WIFA funds, Mr. Guerra, I think that, you know, if any, if anyone has gone, gone back and forth with this, with the whole WIFA issue, it's just really put that up there with me. And, and, and so I, I want, I want them here. I want to see them here.
Yeah, I can ask the contractor, if, if you approve the contract, you can ask the contractor for be present next month and bring a presentation about this, the, let's say, the schedule, the scope of work, what, what the, the, the action plan that they will have and, and respond to questions directed to you.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Doh.
Yes, Mr. Guerra, I guess one of the questions that, and I have a couple, but one of them goes back to the architectural planning or designing. I think we had a, a few companies that did it. And I was, your, your office couldn't do that, what they did? The engineering? Because that's what you're there for, right?
Yeah, let me tell you something interesting about this particular project. Yes, Mr. Barson has hired consultants to do the designs for this project. And they were paid and done. Unfortunately.
For consulting or for, or for drawing the plans?
Consultants to prepare the plans.
You did the plans?
And, and, let, let me continue. Yeah, I'm going there. So the consultant hired by Mr. Barson has prepared the plans for water and sewer. There was one consultant for the water, one consultant for the sewer. When, when I was ready for the bidding process, I discovered that the water and sewer were designed in the same trench.
There you go.
So I did myself the sewer and I separated the drawings.
So we really spent that money use, uselessly because you could have done the work, a better job of what they did.
It served for a purpose because you, you start, you don't start from zero. You, you just copy the, the notes and the, the notes, the details, everything. Just by the way, I received from the consultant who prepared the plans, the drawings in Arrocut and facilitated my work.
But, but then again, didn't they have the responsibility to come and correct it instead of you doing it?
Hmm, this is what happened because they submitted the plans for view. They give certain amount of time, there were no comments, so they are done, they, they were paid. If we require them to redo the plans, they will have to pay them again. So.
Okay, so that was a bad contract, in other words, from Mr. Barson, was it, that hired him?
Yeah.
Okay, so apparently he didn't know what he was doing, I guess. Should have, he should have checked that company out a little further and maybe even come to whoever the city manager was and, and discuss those issues. Because, you know, it, it costs the city when, when a director makes a, a bad choice, a bad decision. And, and that's why we have a city manager so that, you know, he can, he can do his due diligence and if he needs to go to legal, they do their diligence. And it's kind of a chain of command thing. But anyway, the other problem here, or that I want to know is, who is going to be the project manager on this? Because that's, that's what, that's what Mr. Bonilla.
Bonillas.
Bonillas was asking was somebody to be accountable of the work they're doing. In other words, they're living up to the letter because we're dealing with federal now, we're dealing with federal funds, we're dealing with state funds, we're dealing. And so the city can take all the responsibility. Who's the project manager?
We, we have a project manager in, 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 in public works and then he's very good, very strict. He's one of the most strict guys dealing with projects. They don't, he doesn't leave to go anything. If, if the contractor is charging 20 feet of sand, water services and, and the contract stated for, let's say, 40, he will pay only 20. So that's, I have seen it. So he's good in that way. So he will take care of that.
Here in the city?
Yeah, he's, he's public works.
Public work?
Mr. Barson, Mr. Guerra, you know, I'm going to ask you what I asked you many times. This is, so this is a WIFA project, right?
It's combination, WIFA, CDBG.
Okay, so it's one of the 32 projects that we had with the, with the WIFA, right?
You are correct.
One out of 11 sewer projects.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked you many times. We, do we have the funds to finish the payment, the payment on, on this project?
Yes, we do.
Because in, in the past, in the past, Mr. Guerra, you have said, with the, with Mr. Barson, you said, yes, we have the money. And then you come back and you say, oh, by the way, we don't have money to finish the project. Then we had a good, last time, we had to use ARPA money to finish WIFA projects when in the past you told us, yes, we have the funds. So I'm going to ask you again, do we have the money to finish the payment on this project? You're not going to be here later and saying, oh, and by the way, I, we, we need more money to finish the payment because that's been the history with the whole WIFA. That's why I sort of get a little bit annoyed at this.
Yeah, let me, let me tell you, in order to reduce the cost of this project, instead of giving the, to the contractor also the paving portion, we have very skilled personnel and equipment. Thanks to you, in the last years, in the last few years, we have been purchasing very good equipment, brand new equipment for chief seals and, and, and paving. And we'll use our city crews to do the paving instead of the contractor.
But last time, the, last time, another, correcting for wrong, Mr. Guerra, I'm, in the past with these WIFA projects, you have given this company the whole project for pavement because you said that it, that it will create, it would look ugly because if, if the company that did this work would only pave a certain amount of, of a street, it would look bad. Then the city going back and finishing again. So now, now it's, you made a 180, now it's, well, now the city of Nogales is going to do it. So.
Yeah.
Which, which one is it?
Yeah, I think you're making reference to the paving of Vista Royal Road in Rango Island.
Yes.
That project was, the way that was designed was to do only the trenching. And then later on, thanks to mayor and council, decided to, to pave the whole thing. If we give the word to the contractor for, for, you know, at that time, or excuse me, if the city crew, that, that is, was a huge subdivision, we don't have the, the capacity to take care of those, those type of pavings. So we, at that time, we had a list of projects to accomplish for that fiscal year. So we weren't able to jump in and do the work. So mayor and council decided to use ARPA funds and also.
But we use ARPA funds, Mr. Guerra, because you guys, you guys couldn't get it right. That, that's why we, we had to use ARPA. It's not, it's not that we were just waiting, what, what we can use the ARPA money for? We, we were kind of forced into that because prior to that, you had said, yes, we have the money to finish these projects. And it turns out that it was not true. So that, that's why when it comes to, I really, when it comes to the whole WIFA, I questioned Mr. Guerra many years ago, that 14.5, 32 projects, you stood there and, and other people said, yes, we, we have enough and this and that, and it wasn't true. We probably got four projects done and probably two from sewer. And we're back here at this one. So that, that's all, Mr. Guerra, I just, I need some, I need to be more constant on this. I don't want to be here a couple of months later or three months later, say, hey, you know, they're done or six months later and, well, we don't have, it's, it's on record, Mr. Guerra, that you're saying that we have for the payment and so. I hope that it's true because in the past.
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Bonilla, certainly I, I hear your angst is the word I'll use. Certainly I can't change the past, again, six months, I hear this. Certainly the contracts are now being revised again, they're coming to you, they're going to be, and thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing that up. Certainly we brought in, on the contract itself, it's city manager and or designee that will be overseeing this as well. So I will have my hands in this, this project. Granted, from this point forward, projects will go through the processes that you're seeing with the other entities of what we're doing. It's certainly, I can't change the past and I agree with you. I will give you a presentation, I will bring this information in our budget study session, exactly what you're talking about, where we're at with that. I'll give you everything on what I have as far as WIFA funds, where we spend it, everything on those projects. So I hear what you're saying, I will present that to you certainly. We'll try to keep it in a revised way so we're not spending a lot of time on it. I can't change what transpired. Only from moving forward, from this point forward, that company is going to be up there and I will expect them to see them once a month, giving a presentation and letting us know where they're at. So they, they can't come back and say, oh, I didn't, you know, this change of weather or whatever, we all know the weather here, we all know that. Again, I'm not trying to hold Juan accountable for anything that transpired in the past or not let him off the hook, but certainly we're working together. And that's the whole point of all this is bringing it to you, keeping you informed with communication. And thank you for bringing that because each and every person that does their work in this, as we started out this council meeting, that's the way it's going to be. And Inova, I can't, I don't know, but I know this, they will be up there giving a presentation on a monthly basis with slides showing us where they're at. So I, I don't want to interject too much because I understand what you're saying, I can't change that.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, and, and thank you for, for, this is totally different how things have been running in the past because we approve projects and they never inform us on anything. And then lo and behold, there are big surprises and there's nothing we can do other than, well, accept it and try to fix it afterwards. But, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Kramer, for, for taking that proactive way of thinking on, on, on these projects because they're not, they're, you know, we're using CDBG funds now for, to finish this off, so.
You're, you're piecemealing to get this one project done, I agree. And I had my hand in this to piecemeal it because it was needed to get done so we could use this. But nevertheless, you will be informed, we'll make sure we do it the right way. And that's the point of this. So not just you, but everyone in the town knows what's going on because that's important to you as the elected officials who represent this town or city.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Turn on your mic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr., you know, I asked you about the project manager and you said we have one here in the city. But the city has designated Southeastern Arizona Governments Organization as the administration project manager. They're the ones that are going to be checking up to making sure that the CDBG funds are being used correctly, that they're not being misspent, that the, that the corporation, I guess, Inova, is doing the work correctly. And they're the ones that are going to help the city collect on if they pass the date where they don't finish the project on time. And, and I think it ends up at 10% or, or a thousand dollars a day is it a fine?
That's correct, thousand dollars a day that we put in the contract.
They're supposed to be, so Seagull is, is the one that's really going to be verifying that they're following federal regulations on everything, that whatever, whatever Inova has is under their employees or the subcontract, that they're all legitimate, that they're all to start off with citizens or they have working permits to work here. Aside from that, they're going to make sure they're getting paid where they're supposed to be getting paid. And so they're going to be the watchdogs, not, not, not the regular city project manager that we have here in the city. He might, under, under the city manager's guide, he can be his eyes and ears out there on the street. But, but he's going to, I don't think he's really that capable as far as, as when it comes working with federal rules and regulations. But working together, then we're all a team. And, and that's what I want to make sure that, that we have that peace of mind, that nobody's going somewhere else and not, and, and not keeping the city manager in lieu of things, the loop. Because, because he needs to be on top of that. And I hope that your, your directors respond to you in that form because otherwise, we're going to be at fault with some of these federal funds. And so we need to be, guys, well, again, the other thing I want to do, I want to commend our city attorney on the contract you wrote out with Inova. I, I think you're the one that did it? Did you write out the contract? No, that's, I'm serious, I, I've, I've read some in the past, they've never been so locktied, so direct, so specific. Your wording, your, is, is all really kind of puts a clamp. Maybe I think that's, maybe that's the reason that those other bidders didn't want to get involved because it's, they're really committed and Inova's not going to have any leeway like they have in the past. This, this is, I hope you, if you know them, you better let them know that they better do a good job because otherwise, they're going to have to come back and, and do it correctly or there's going to be penalties and what other else?
No, no, I'm just going to add to this.
Okay. I just thought, I did read the contract a lot.
I'm trying to wind this down for you all because I think it's.
I want to, I want to thank you guys for putting up such a good.
I'm going to wind it down. I know, Mr. Bonilla, you had one other question, just let me say this. Once this gets going, just like everything else, I've invited each and every one of you to, when I can, to meetings. And certainly when we start having these meetings, because I'm part of this, I am, but they already know that, the two of them that are here. I will certainly invite council to those, just as those that attended the South 32 when we met over there. Just as we're going to continue meeting on those meetings, you're going to be invited when I can, if it's a weekly meeting, you're invited. Granted, only three of you can attend, but certainly that is also there going to happen.
Well, I just want to, I just want to say that it says right here, the city shall review and verify the percentage, progress and quality of work completed. And, and as they complete it, we are supposed to pay 90% upfront. And whatever is not paid, that 10% is being held back as a penalty to take out whatever penalties that, that come to that, to them. But it says here, the city will also submit a copy of the approved application for payment to William D. the city will also submit a copy of the approved application for payment to William D. Osborne, AICP Community Development Program Manager at Wasmoren, uh, at sego.org. So really, he's gonna be the watchdog, making sure that even, even the city, which is the city manager and, and all your team are, are following the rules and guidelines.
So you just answered the question, Mr. Guerra, there's a whole pack of dogs watching.
There you go, just, just a reminder that there's somebody gonna be on top of you, but, but you guys are doing a great job. And again, that contract really, I like the way you wrote it up, it really has a lock on, on, uh, what their responsibilities are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonilla.
Mr. Kramer, or Mr. Guerra, out of the 32 RIFA projects, or was it 31 or 32, how many have not been completed?
That, well, I'll give you that answer.
Okay.
Just, yeah, if we, I'll give you that next Wednesday, because again, I'll cover all that.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right, all opposed? Motion passes. Number two, consideration possible action of Order 2025-05-015, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona approving a mutual aid compact between the City of Nogales and the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Next, Mr. City Manager.
I promised you it'd be an early meeting, sorry. It's all right, we're being productive. All right, I'll get through this. All right, fire alarm systems start on Monday, it'll be this building and Public Works Building. So they'll start installing our up-to-date fire alarm systems, which you guys certainly approved. I met yesterday, and the McKinstry folks were great with this, because Franklin Energy brought their whole team down. Tom brought his boss, which was, um, I believe, I want to say Mike Penn. Anyway, there was a few others, along with Edith Garcia, who's the project manager for TEP. I met with them right over here. They are also going to help work with this project, as I told you, the $5 million grant we applied for streetlights, we're going to look to try to get more, try to do the whole city at once, that's my goal. They're gonna help, obviously, McKinstry can be part of that as well, because they've already got that, we've got over, how many streetlights, Juan? 1,800, is that right? For streetlights. So, something in, it's very high numbers, but nevertheless, a lot of them, we're going, working on that. It was great that they came here, and again, everyone likes, for some reason, Herman has got the people going, because they went over and ate shrimp tacos. So why they're doing that, I guess that's good. All right, I didn't give it, we did talk about the old fire hall with McKinstry, so you know where they're at with good on that. I spoke with Captain Mohammed, Captain Mohammed is the captain for this area, for the hundred or so army soldiers that are in town. He stated to me, no, they will probably not be using their armory, because they are staying in our hotels. So they are infusing even more money, along with 100% per diem. So if you see our gentlemen and gentlewomen that are serving our country by being down here, hopefully, the three of you, certainly, Legion Club members, invite them, say hi, but that's what he said. And he said, let the council know that he will bring his CO, and they will present on June, if they can possibly come in, just explain what they're doing, and the turnabout, because they'll be here for November, and another group will come in. But he would be glad to come and speak in front of you as the US Army, so that is a good thing. Update on the roads, I just spoke with the, again, the lobbyist Mark Barnes, he is bringing a contingent, I believe, the Hernandez sisters that serve, certainly, we have one here in, from our legislative group. He's already worked, he's working the both sides of the aisle, he's already worked with the Republican side, and he is now working with the Democrats that are coming, they want to come down and actually see the three roads that hopefully they will fund with the projects that we turned in, Juan certainly turned that in as well. Um, I spoke to the Lions Club, I haven't been over there in 20 years with those people, certainly, it's, uh, just like everything else, we all get old, right? It used to be 30 people in there, and it's down, but it was great that they were there, those that were there. Certainly was important to just give them some information, what the council and what we are trying to do to change in the paradigm shift. Granted, I got some pushback, because there's always one Lion Club member there that always pushes back. Those of you that know who I'm talking about, and you know who you're talking about, but it was all good. Leo is also doing some OSHA training, I just spoke with Eddie Jung, we're working on getting all their flags, people, everyone that's on the street over there, we want to get them OSHA training, just to protect what they're doing and protect what we're doing. Certainly, it's important, I sent a message to all the directors, they are going to work, we are improving, David was here earlier, we are, and Juan, or, excuse me, Juan. Jose and Miguel are working on getting our webpage up to date, we should be wide by, um, May 15th or May 17th, one of those dates. It will be getting all departments, everything that you guys as council have been wanting to do, certainly with Parks and Recs, our next, my next one is facility requests, because we're gonna get that process going, that will be online. There's gonna be a lot more payments available online, a lot more information. So we're working on the webpage with the departments. We met, Hector and his team met, we are certainly working on a new pathway, because we're gonna, and correct me if, is Asela, correct? Is the computer program that we're going to use, but we're going to get that going, obviously, we gotta create more opportunities for businesses to streamline it. They have been meeting with Gene, and I believe the Chamber of Commerce every two months, because whatever new businesses are coming to town, we want to open the doors for them, whatever processes we can get going for them. And certainly, we were, we talked about streamlining it, making it much easier for businesses to do everything online, to get whatever plans they're getting in there, and even setting up computers out front, so they'll can, they can do that as well. So again, keep moving forward, keep using the technology that we have, we want to be efficient and yet responsible to any future businesses. June will be also, June's gonna be a long agenda, I think, but anyway, I told them, no more than 10 minutes. Um, the Port Authority will give their annual presentation to us in June, and the Chamber of Commerce will give theirs in July. So the June 4th, and I think, believe July 2nd. So those two organizations that you as council have voted to support, it's certainly important, because they are good entities of this city, and I told them to make sure that they present from the fiscal year of what they've done to enhance the city of Nogales. There's the new map right here of Nogales from April of 2025. I figured, we've never had that posted here, now we do. I know it's way far away for the, over there, but certainly, we do have a map of the city in the city of Nogales. Um, cameras, good, you want to talk about cameras, I just spoke with John, we are starting to believe by next month, we are gonna submit forward, start working on the grant for our cameras. We'll see where that goes, but we're certainly working on that as well, because again, everything that we can try to get is grants, and I'm pushing grants, grants, grants. So that's where we're at. That's it, because I don't want to spend more than seven minutes talking. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's and council report, current events, Mr. Bonillas.
No, I just attended the, on April 2nd, which was Worldwide Autism Day, uh, we partnered up with Mariposa Clinic, and we had an event back there at Techea Park, and that's all I have to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dove?
Uh, yes, uh.
Mike?
Mike, oh, sorry.
Ah, there. On April 9th, attended the Governor's Appears at the old courthouse there with Fredo Velazquez, and yeah, well, they had the guest speakers, it was very informative. On the 16th of April, we had the Easter egg hunt here, and the real success, I mean, it's, it's, it's growing, every year it seems to just get double and get better, and people are just joyous that day. So again, a great job for our councilwoman, uh, Montiel, and Lisa, Lisa and her sister Judy, that, that they worked hard to make it a success, Mayor, you got a good team there. Again, we, uh, we, most of us attended, uh, the groundbreaking at South 32, uh, on the 23rd. It was a beautiful ceremony, a lot of people from all over came, and it, I think there's gonna attract a lot of attention throughout the state. And so we're glad to have South 32 there as, as, uh, helping the city of Nogales grow. The other thing, uh, that, uh, was a real, real success, was on the 25th, Friday, the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser that they had at our own Palo Duro up there in Meadow Hills. Yeah, that was fantastic, uh, it brought real life back to one of our, ours, I guess, jewels of the city, I should say, and, and, but most of all, it was the fellowship amongst all the people that attended, the good time, the music was great, uh, the food was delicious. I, I, I stayed only a couple of hours, because I had to leave town, but, but I left when it was dwindling, and, uh, and it was almost over, but, but, uh, everybody had had a great time, it was a beautiful day. I really enjoyed it, that Palo Duro looked better than ever. Thank you for all for the work you're doing over there. Then we had the, the big event on Saturday, the following day. We had a few things going on that morning. I attended the Tai Chi out here in front of City Hall, uh, with the people that came, the instructors that came from Mexico, and, and it was a, a great event, another good event was going in the back of Techea Park here in back of the city. We had one of our congressional candidates here, the daughter of our former congressional leader, Raúl Grijalva de Lita was there, so it was a joy to go over there and spend some time with the people that had gathered to support her, I guess. And after that, again, the, the right, right across the, the street, I guess, you should say, from here, I'll tell you, the city, the city complex really takes a lot of, a lot of, uh, a lot of area. I just walked down over there, and there was, uh, a jazz band, uh, the, the, I guess, honoring, of course, our Amingas Jazz Festival. It, it was great, they were, I mean, the, the groups that were playing were outstanding. Uh, again, all the folks that were there were enjoying it, uh, and so I, I wasn't able to attend the Fiesta de Mayo, because I had a, there was a wedding in the family, my niece was getting married, so I had to go to that, I was there close to Picture Rock by Marana, and, and so I, 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 I did excuse myself with the council beforehand, but again, I know State always likes to see us up there, the council folks, uh, but next year, Lord willing, I'll be there. Thank you. That, that's pretty much my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Paredes.
Well, I also want to mention the Easter egg hunt, it was a great event, Lisa, thank you. Uh, we had the Fiesta de Mayo event, I want to thank all the city personnel that took responsibility for making it happen. In particular, I want to thank Jessica for all of your, I mean, it was a great job you did and all your guys. And I want to say a personal thanks to Judy for helping me get in one day, maybe half a day, the liquor license permit. That it was a mistake or whatever, but you helped us with that, thank you really very much. Then we, we invite you all, we're gonna have a concert on the 16th at the Whitman Museum, it's a concert piano, and all the funds will go to the Ime Becas. And, and through the Cultural Arts Committee, today we send, uh, the senior center 90 presents for the mothers for the event they're having there Friday. That, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Ms. Pontiel.
Yeah, so just not to repeat all the events that the council goes to, but this is just to show, Mr. Kramer, how, uh, working together, uh, makes, uh, things a lot better. Um, and, you know, all these events that the city puts together, we couldn't do it without you facilitating the process. And all the, like Jessica, for example, you know, making, and her department making it easier for us to hold these events, because we need the directors to help us facilitate that process. Because after all, it's for the residents, all these events are, are for the residents, um, giving something back, because the residents say, what does the city give us back? Because we travel, we do certain things like that, but for our own benefit, but what does the community get back? So when we do events like this, this is what they get back. They get an opportunity to mingle, to know each other, to talk, to, to get something from, um, you know, from the city. But all of this couldn't be possible if you didn't help us and the directors put, um, everything together, and, and I really appreciate that, and I'm sure the rest of the people that put these events together appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Parra.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say, American Legion Post 23 and VFW was inviting the public for Memorial Day Ceremony Monday, May 27th at 10:00 AM at the cemetery. And following that, the American Legion will be hosting a luncheon at Fletcher Park beginning at noon, so everyone's invited, please. Pardon me? Free to the public.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, uh, I'm gonna agree with everything that Mr. Doyle said, because I was at all those events, you know, I'm not gonna go into detail. And, and I also want to echo the words of Councilwoman, uh, Montiel, you know, for, finally, I think that we're working, we're all going in the same direction, and we're working as a team now. It seems like it's getting better every time, so I, 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 I thank everybody in the council for, for taking their time and, and and putting things together and, and agreeing with each other. The other thing is, I've been working with, uh, meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, and we've been working on, on tourism, and we've got some, uh, some good ideas coming to the table, so I'll keep you informed as soon as we have more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, I mean, basically, on April 3rd, Arizona Radio opened its spot, uh, Gamalier, opened a new radio station here, um, is making some special, um, introduction interviews every Tuesdays at 6:00 PM, it's a free radio station, uh, then on April 8th, I was with the Department of Commerce and the US consulate, also advancing on how to get tourism, how to, uh, look into, um, the border trade and all that. On April 9th, we, uh, supported the Border Liaison Unit up at, um, Deacon City Port. We had, uh, agents from Marshals, the, uh, Arizona Department of Transportation, we had, uh, Mexican consulate, the US consulate people, um, CBP, um, Border Patrol, both, uh, cities of Nogales, Arizona, city of Nogales, Sonora. You know, it was a very informative, Chief, I might get you involved in that one, until you be up to date on, on any, any, uh, working relationships with those, um, you two, Mr. Larrillo. I'll let, I'll let you know, uh, the contact, Manny Molina. Okay, um, the other, you know, the egg hunt was great, um, candidatas of for the Cinco de Mayo girls came down here on the 22nd, and it was great, especially seeing my two little girls, uh, from Mr. Young, uh, used to see him in the baseball uniform, and looked very, uh, beautiful in, in dresses. The groundbreaking of South 32, I think that's a, a big future for Nogales. Then, uh, on the 23rd, I was, um, the council, um, is put out a, a photo, um, exhibition, Voces de la Frontera, where we were like seven, uh, uh, different, eight different people that, uh, he talked about and, and put photos, um, exhibiting, uh, you know, what everybody is, their version of what is the, the border. The Carnazal for the Boys and Girls Club, from everybody, from the Boys and Girls Club, the produce industry and everybody, they, 100%, thank everybody, city and council, uh, you know, Parks and Rec did a great job out there, thank you, Jessica, Mr. Kramer, uh, thank you for, uh, allowing all that, uh, to, PD did a great job with the parking and all that. So from everybody, I don't want to miss anybody, but everybody that was involved, it was a great, great event. On Saturday, the 26th, Nogales Marathon, again, Parks and Rec, uh, did a great job, the, uh, Charles Mingus Concert, uh, down here at the bank was also a great, uh, event. On Saturday, this past Saturday, May 3rd, we had the Taekwondo, uh, Uh, on Saturday, this past Saturday, May 3rd, we had the Taekwondo, uh, competition down at, uh, Nogales High School, uh, very international. You had teams all the way from Flagstaff, um, you know, Phoenix, Tucson, uh, Hermosillo, here in Nogales, Sonora. Everything was a great, um, Fiesta de Patas, um, Esther, there's no words to say, but you guys do a great job on that. Thank you. And thank, uh, you know, the, the council and all, the Cultura Arte, uh, club and Parks and Rec, thank you for everything. Next, uh, we go to future agenda items. Mr. Bonilla? Mr. Doyle? It's there? Nah? Okay. I just need a, I'd like to get a, an update, uh, on the concession restrooms at Memorial Park. Uh, my back door is, what's going to happen?
It'll, it'll happen.
Okay.
I promise.
The other thing, uh, I was at a meeting at Circle, uh, Circles of Peace earlier and I think, uh, Mr. Kramer will talk with, uh, supposedly, uh, the county is going to start enforcing a, uh, requirement plan for integrated emergency plan for all events, including 4th of July. This was just brought up to me at 3 o'clock or 2:30 this afternoon. Um, so I think we, we need to talk, they, they need, they want to start doing a, a plan, emergency plan if needed, you know, who to contact and all that. Sobe will, will let us know and we'll, we'll start talking about it. And I asked her because, you know, uh, you know, for the events that Little League hosts, uh, she wants the same thing for all events. So it's just, you know, so everybody knows, you know, which way is up, left, right and down and everything, you know, in, in case it's needed. So that's, that's a new thing from, uh, from the county. Um, as far as from my other hat, from Little League, from Little League, we're, what's that?
Yeah, we can't discuss that, so, yeah.
What was the question?
No, no, no. Not on your.
Okay. And the other thing, uh, from Little League perspective, uh, last Saturday we picked up, uh, hosting, uh, Memorial Park, um, district and state, uh, juniors and seniors baseball. And at Fletcher, we got district, state and regional baseball. So we'll, we'll have basically a lot of baseball from the third week of June through the 25th of July. Okay? That's all I've got. Move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor? All right.